2025 council workshop alcohol beverage license information if I'm reading the PowerPoint right.
Yes.
We'll turn it right over to Ms. Grill.
Rebecca Grill, I'm the city manager and joined by a lot of staff. We've been working on putting together a presentation about alcohol beverage licenses. This is a continuation of what you were talking about last fall and I think last summer and last spring. So just a lot of this is probably information you're already aware of, but we wanted to do some background and then put together some next steps. So I believe all of you have had the opportunity to get the presentation ahead of time, but I'm just going to walk through that and then staff will help clarify parts that I don't, that are specific to Oshkosh that I might not know, but we'll just go ahead and get started. So these are the discussion items. We're going to go over kind of why this, why things were brought up to the council, go over Act 73 that the state had passed, what a full-service retail outlet is, what the current process is, what we're doing with renewals this year, and then a surrender process, and then come to a conclusion and at the end with the next steps and consensus with the council. As you are probably familiar, you talked about two of the legislation, nine November 26th of last year and December 10th. So this is just highlighting what the discussions were at that time and then links to the meetings in case someone wanted to look at those later. I've looked at them several times, so I probably won't use it again. So then just an overview of Act 73. As you're probably aware, we have Chapter 125 of Wisconsin statutes been around for a long time. To get anything changed in it is very difficult because of all the interested parties, but there was something changed, Act 73, and then some of the things started last May and then some started January 1st. And just an overview of some of the things that were in there. The state has established a Division of Alcohol Beverages, DAB, I promise not to do the DAB. Then there's some new application forms that people are required to use to file with municipalities. Before, if there were any changes in applications, licenses, we're supposed to let the municipalities know within 10 days. Now they have 30 days to let them know. Then two kind of significant things as it relates to definitions or requirements. So fermented malt beverage has been expanded, so you know, the use of the seltzers and things like that. So now, and gluten-free beer. So now that opens up a lot of ability for people that might just have the beer license and they don't necessarily need the full liquor license too. An additionally classy wine is, they're not, no longer required to be a restaurant. So previously, if someone wasn't classified as a restaurant, but they wanted to serve wine, they needed to get a full liquor license. That's no longer required. And then just clarifying that the producers and retailers have the same hours as regular Class B licenses. To-go cocktails are legal with certain limitations. That was a popular thing during the pandemic, so it's been codified. Axe throwing facilities can have alcohol and underage people with alcohol. There's statewide bartender licenses now. I don't, do you know how much those?
$200.
Okay. And ours are 60?
60. And the statewide is the same. It's two years. They expire every two years.
So people can, instead of just getting one municipality, they can get a statewide license and then they can operate in any municipality. There are ability to transfer quota licenses from one municipality to the next. Before this act, they had to be contiguous. Now it just has to be in the same county. Not that you would probably ever want to do that unless they were giving you millions of dollars. Then some clarifications on the wedding barns and then the full-service retail sales. And we'll go into a little more detail about those. Full-service retail outlets, these are for people that produce alcohol, whether it's beer, distillery, wine. They can actually, depending upon the volume of what they're producing, they can actually now have, serve other types of alcohol on their premise. So if it, if you're a brewery and you meet the qualifications, you can now sell old-fashioned mixed drinks, things like that, without having to have an alcohol license from the municipality. So this is a new expanded thing, which helps with the quota limitation. So as of May 1st, 2024, anyone that would fit into this, they were no longer able to get a municipal license and we don't have anyone that has both of these. There's the same standards that exist for any other Class Bs exist for full-service retailers. So you can't, you can't make more restrictions or more regulations for them. They have to follow what you do for your, for the rest of the licenses.
So, sorry, just to play that back, sorry to interrupt. A place like Sturgeon Spirits or Fifth Ward could now sell things that are not made at Fifth Ward or Sturgeon Spirits without an additional liquor license?
If they meet the serving.
The volume thresholds.
Meet the volume threshold.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, so they could, I don't, I'm not, haven't been there, but if they don't, they, I'm assuming they just make spirits, so now they could serve beer or wine if they wanted to.
If they don't produce.
Correct. They still have to go through the process of buying it through a wholesaler, just like if you have a retail license.
Just like any other tavern, basically.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And this is just the, there's three different types. So there's one for on your premises. If you're producing, you can have, you can now serve the other items there. There's also, you can get another site off of where you do production, or you can do an unlimited transfer, which is basically a temporary type license. I would not have chosen these names because the unlimited transfer is just not very logical. But those are the ones that really help facilitate having, you know, breweries at events and things like that. So it really opens up different opportunities. The municipalities are involved in the second, so they have to apply through the city first and through the approval process, which is one of the things we want to codify as part of hopefully the next steps, so we can go through these. Because I believe we had one question, but it was luckily not, it was in Lake Winnebago, so we didn't have to deal with it.
Yeah, it was in connection with one of the ice fishing tournaments and they called and asked about unlimited transfer, full-service retail and the approval process and where are you going to be? Out on the ice. And I said, state.
Luckily, we didn't have to deal with that, but we like to have something in place. And it's not just, it can be any read, or production. It doesn't have to be in Oshkosh. So someone could come from another municipality that brews it or distills in another municipality. Again, the requirements are the same as the full Class B. Then just going over the current process, which I'm sure most people in here are familiar. These are the different types of licenses that we have here. I just like to add the beer and liquor because sometimes the quotes are confusing. So you can all read here. I think the significant ones that we're, we are more focused on is the Class B liquor because that's the one that has the quota limitation on it. But these are all the different types and the amount that they cost, so. Well, there's different qualifications for the applicants. You're familiar with them. Convictions, they have to be residents, they have to be legal drinking age, and then they have to take a responsible beverage server course. And then those are all the different application documents they need at the time of application. The first three are the new ones that were developed by the DAB. The last one is something that the city has, is not required as part of the application process. We'll, we can talk a little bit more about that. It's more, I believe, been used to kind of determine whether this is a license that is more desirable than another one. So like a corner store versus, you know, a development that's having a restaurant or something. Corner store is not a good example because they'd probably get a Class A, but something, some, just a bar versus a development. Here's the process. So we receive the application in the clerk's office. They make sure that it's complete and they pay the publication fee. They don't have to pay the actual license fee until it's issued. But it's important that we're not taking incomplete applications, especially when we get to the point of who's, who's first come, who's, you know, like when we get to the quota issues, must be complete. Then it's referred to those four different departments and the county department. So the development is checking for zoning, is it in a residential area? I'm sure there's lots of college students would like to get a license for their, you know, parties, but we want to make sure that.
And they're checking the distance from churches and schools.
The 300 feet.
Which is a state requirement that's checked by community development.
So they're checking that. Then the police department does background checks, looks at how the oper, if it was previously licensed, what the previous operations were like. Fire department does the fire codes and then the health department is looking at the health codes. Any department have anything to add? Police, fire?
I just had a quick question. This is new, right? As we're seeing it?
This is all new.
And the only real difference here, just to roll clear, is the community development box is what's being added to this, right? From what we do now, or do we do that automatically now?
This is what, this is automatically done now.
So what's new about this one?
This is, this is, it's not like a new process.
This is what we're doing now.
It's what new applications go through.
Perfect. That's what I was going to say.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's great.
So any new applicant that comes in goes through this process.
Got it.
So I have one question. We're going to talk, the next slide is the conditional approval piece. We had a conditional approval requested a while back where we were going to say this license is conditionally approved, but we have to wait for community development, fire, some other people to look at it before it actually is finally approved. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Was that not legal at the time we were trying to? We didn't end up doing that. We ended up just approving it.
So.
Are we eliminating that barrier?
Yeah, we're going to eliminate it because.
This is new.
Well, this is.
There you go. It's the bases loaded case, which actually came out in 2020, but it was a federal circuit court case, so it wasn't as publicized. We found out about it over the course of, I don't know, the last couple of months, whatever, looked at it. And in that case, the court says you can't do those, the conditional approvals, which was pretty common of a lot of municipalities.
Yeah, no question of that.
Every other municipality.
They all were. DJ, the one you're mentioning was contentious because it had different pieces that were conditional and the conditional pieces of that one were out of the ordinary. I don't think we've ever, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, I don't know that we've ever issued one where all the conditions were met before it was issued, because you always issue it and then fire follows and then health follows.
Uh, no.
Police is first, but.
I think sometimes we have.
We've had everybody okayed on things and then given it to you guys.
But it's not necessarily.
I've never had one without health department being done afterwards, but that's always been the case. So it's always unconditional on something. I'm not saying it's good, bad, or otherwise, but going forward is good for us to know.
The court said it's bad. I, we were trying to work with you.
Right, exactly.
But we're just not, we're being told we can't do that.
And that's where my question's going, is so now that, now that we understand that this case exists and the rule exists, we will always follow the process as written on the previous slide?
Correct.
And I guess that's my question.
And the thing about this is if you're not in a position to want to approve it, then you'd probably like hold it over in council or something like that. When I was in West Dallas, we had standing committees, so there was a license committee. They would recommend approval and then it would come to the council. We'd just leave it in the council until they would come back with whatever the council wanted them to satisfy. Because once you do the granting, the clerk has to issue it.
Has to issue it.
Perfect.
And I just wanted to go back to this, license applications can be not denied for pretty much any reason. New applications, that's, it's up to the discretion of the council.
On the last slide, you don't even have to go back, but just for my remembering here, liquor licenses expire May 31st or June 30th?
June 30th.
June 30th.
The end of June.
Okay.
All right. And then just to, just to clarify the difference between inspections and zoning. Inspections is more about safety and then zoning is complying with the zoning code. Do you have anything else, Harry? I should have asked, added the 300, but.
Yeah, that's a big thing, you know, when we are working with a new applicant. A lot of times they're already through our door because they're maybe building new, they're adding on, or they're doing, you know, something where they're going through our office anyways, but we certainly look for that, you know, state statutes with the 300 feet. And it really is the zoning review to make sure that the use is, you know, it meets the zoning code. And then inspections and fire are kind of working together as far as, you know, does the building meet fire code? So that's where that usually comes into play as far as making sure that they're able to get their occupancy permit.
Rebecca, on that slide, are we, we're not codifying this language, correct? These are examples for the most part?
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is not being put in the chapter four.
Many of these, many of the things coming up would not need fire extinguisher or fire systems, for example. I mean, there, there are all kinds of different things in building code that do not necessarily always follow liquor no matter what.
Not always, but this.
Sprinkler systems are not required just because you serve beer.
Correct, but fire goes through regardless of.
I get it. Yeah, this says sprinkler systems.
Oh, sure.
That's what I'm getting at. We're not codifying these words. These are examples of the things that might happen.
Right. Depending upon what it might be, yeah. Just so people understand, because sometimes there's, they get conflated, so.
I'm aware.
All right. So this is talking about what we're, what we're doing with the renewals this year. So we'll be sending them out in mid-April, April, and then the deputy clerk will be meeting with people. She's here in case anyone has any questions. But some of the things that we want to go through because of the changes of Act 73, so maybe somebody before got a full Class B because they wanted to serve wine. Now they don't need that. They can get a classy wine. Not only is it cheaper for them, but it frees up one of our quota licenses. Sometimes people might just have, they just want to hold on to their license. We have to remind them that they have, actually have to operate for 30 days in a 12-month period, or maybe they're, they just have it for a one-time event. That's where maybe they could work with a full-service retailer to have that event versus having the full Class B tavern quota license. And then the last one, that's the May 1st of last year, people that were eligible for the FSR, they can't, they couldn't have.
Rebecca, in that timeframe, how many were we, I guess, Class B combination licenses were we able to get back that were able to switch to FSRs? Do we have a number on that?
I don't know if there were any.
There weren't any.
There weren't? Okay.
We haven't done this yet though either. This is upcoming, right?
We did, we did check. I double-checked.
Right.
Some of, so like, there, because of the volume, there might be some places that aren't eligible.
That could, right.
Aren't eligible for the FSR.
But these are new things. We're going to meet with deputy clerk for the first time this year. We haven't done that previously. These are new things.
Correct. But the first, the first two things are the ones we're really going to focus on.
Absolutely, yes.
Because we, we know, we double-checked that we don't have any of the third anymore, if we did, which I don't think we did, so.
So we have nobody who qualifies for an FSR in the city.
Correct.
No, but lots probably in the first two categories.
Yeah. So then the renewals continue. This is the current process for this year, so reviewed by the police department, fire department, health department. If there are some changes to their premises, then zoning is, looks at it. So if there's a new deck or patio or something like that, there might be different requirements. And then applications have to be on file for 15 days before the council can grant them and then we'll add them to the council agenda. If you're looking to not approve it, we really need to go through the revocations, the suspension complaint process. So any questions on this?
What, my understanding is we have not, I think it was said at one point, we've not, never is a word I don't like to use, but we haven't often used the revocation power. Is that, do I have that right?
Correct.
Is that something we expect to use this year with, because of the changes?
Hopefully not. Um, I think with, you know, the conditional, we, we need to communicate to people, hey, like if you were somebody who would hold off and pay the taxes on June 30th to have your license issued for, you know, July 1st, we can't do that anymore. So we have, just have to tell them, instead of waiting till June 30th, you have to have it paid by June 10th or June 1st or whatever. To, to get it to council so council can approve it. Or if you have to replace the light bulb in your exit, like, I don't know what you guys check for. If you have to replace the, the light bulb in your exit light so that he'll sign off on it, you need to get that done so that when it goes to council, instead of having that little bit of cushion afterwards, we just have to be more proactive and tell people, you gotta have it taken care of so when council gets it.
It's all good.
It's all good. They can just approve it. You guys can just approve it.
In the instance of the arena last year, they would have lost their license.
We'd have to go through the process.
We would have recommended non-renewal because, yeah.
But also to that point, I think it's fair, DJ, part of your question will be, we've, we haven't revoked lots of licenses since 2018. We changed some of these procedures, but we've gotten lots back for, that are not being used, correct?
We've gotten a number of them back, yeah.
And there'll be, and there are some on the docket this year as well, right? So, and that's not a revocation, that's a surrender. But we do have policies as it stands, it's a year of non-use, correct?
Yeah, as it stands right now, 30 days within a year.
But we've always really said it.
Yeah. It used to be like you had, you know, if you used it at all during the year.
Sure.
And I don't remember how many years ago, we changed that because we said, gee.
2018.
Somebody could get around that pretty easily by just opening one.
And they did.
One day a year.
Yeah.
And whatever. So we made it 30 consecutive days, but you can be, like, if you're normally closed down Monday, we don't come back against you and whatever. So we made it the 30 days. But that is, that's a local ordinance. If you want to change that, that can be changed. It's just that was.
But they, they do come back pretty frequently and that's why we've always had plenty of them since 2018 when this policy was changed. Before that, there were never any of them because people held them forever and ever and ever and ever. So that was the big paradigm shift was not using them meant you had to give it back.
Right.
Got it.
And DJ, if I might, a lot of times, I know specifically within the police department, we do a review and we find that there's a problem, we bring the person in and we have a conversation with them, like, hey, this is going to be a problem. This, this doesn't meet the standards. And then we work with them to figure out a way that they can, hopefully, you don't have to go through the revocation process, like you got to change your agent because something hasn't passed.
Sure.
And this is how we got to fix this thing. So we work with them to say, here, this will help you move forward.
That's perfect. And we'll do the same thing, but just different timelines.
Yes.
The one thing I would caution with, if you want to reduce that time, just be a little cognizant of, like if you're selling a property or something, you might want to give them a reasonable time so that, you know, if you say, if you're closed two days, that's pretty, pretty harsh. But a year, you know, is, is a long time. So that is under your control as council because it's a city ordinance. It's not anything that's in state.
That's a good point. That's a good one that we should all be thinking of. That's always hard because when businesses close, they get a year essentially to use it. But we've had examples recently where a business was purchased, a building was purchased, they had a license previously, but it was revoked previously, and then it was nearly impossible for them to get one back. And that's hard too, because what we want is more things opening. So more available is the best benefit, right? But it's, you're exactly correct. It's too long is bad, too short is bad.
Too short is bad, yeah.
That's the hard part.
Well, and the council can always decide, you know, you could bring them to council and say, it's okay, well, we understand these circumstances. So I think one of the things that's going to be challenging is when sellers' permits are revoked and we get delinquent liquor license holds because they don't have to send us those until 15 days before. So working that out will might be a challenge. I know when I worked in West Dallas, we utilized the provisional license issuance to kind of help us through this process. I haven't talked with staff about that here, but it helped us not to have to go through a lot of the revocations, kind of worked through with people. So maybe that's something we can look at. I haven't, like I said, I've never talked to anyone about that here. It just popped in my head.
Sure. Thanks.
This is the surrender process. So if they're changing, if they're closing, if they're selling to someone, we're, we have a form. We're asking them to meet with staff. So a lot of times people are selling their building or their business. You can't sell the license though, but this is where they can surrender it conditional on the person who's buying the business, not the license, getting the license granted. So again, discretion of granting the license is solely up to the council. And then familiar with the quota. So in 1997, the state passed limitations on the number of licenses municipalities can be issued or can't issue. And then they have the ability to issue more through the reserve Class B if your population goes up by 500. And then you also have the opportunity to do the premier economic development, which the city has taken advantage of. We haven't issued any though.
Correct.
Correct. So as of last week, and I don't think this has changed, we've had 132 of the licenses issued. We have 10 reserve licenses. Only one of those has been issued and then we have the two head reserves.
I have what may be really dumb question, but why is there a maximum? Like, I know that's not our arena to decide, but why can't we issue as many as?
It must have been a lobby, some type of lobby.
It was in 1983, it was lobbyists that came in and said, you can't just issue as many as you want through Tabernacle. It's a competition factor.
Okay. Supply.
Yep. It was based on population at that time and whatever you had set at that time is yours and for populations that you gain from that point forward, you gain licenses. Which is, it's fair enough. It really is.
Yeah, I, I get it. I was just like, but it seems like local control will be able to decide what is the right number for us.
In many states, that's the case. In Wisconsin, there's none.
Like everything else.
Yes, like everything else.
We're special here. Right now, correct me if I'm wrong, this is how we're processing currently. Applications come in and are sent to council on a first, kind of first-serve basis. We're thinking that there should be some type of criteria when we're starting to get more of them that we send with the license so we can, obviously you make the decision whether you want to grant or deny the license, but looking at these things, you might be able to establish, well, this is going to be more beneficial for economic development than this license type. And these are some of the things that staff have to put together that helps and that goes back to that form that the city requires as part of the application. So these are just our recommendations. So if there's other things or less things, but we believe that it's really important that we do something and I think just for your own convenience, not having to go through a huge discussion at council about all these things, having us put it together for you as we put the application forward, we believe makes the most, the most sense.
And maybe this is what you're already planning, but I guess kind of what I'd want to see is maybe a score, like, hey, you know, like out of a 10-point scale, we rate this with a nine. It's a really, really good idea. Here's, this one's a four. one a nine, it's a really, really good idea, here's this one's a four, you know, or, you know, they're only open two days a week, whatever.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we could get really complicated with this, we could, you know, some things could have more weight than others.
Right. And to be fair, I don't want to make that spiel, I want.
Yes, yes, but I, you know, I think we'd have to think about that a little bit more, because there are some things, you know, maybe there's a huge benefit of, um, economic development for someplace that's only open three days a week, but, you know, do we want to give that a three, and then the one that's open seven days is, you know, so we'll, we'll just have to think.
If it's only open three days, but it's right next to the Hurd Stadium.
Right.
Yeah, I, I'll get that too.
And I was gonna go there, are we allowed to set geographic boundaries for some of the licenses to say, we have, let's say we have three extra quota licenses, now we don't right now, but we're saying we have to have one in the Sawdust District, um, and then there's where we have to, if someone wants to buy Pioneer Island, we recognize that something has to be there. Are we allowed to set those kind of parameters?
Yes, we had them for years, we did it for a long time.
Yeah, we didn't, I guess formally set them, but they were kind of like.
There's no.
We're holding, you know, we know we want development.
We have a shelf wait in waiting.
Yeah.
When, when we did that, did we advertise it?
Yes, and it, but nobody really took us up on it.
Yeah.
I think, correct, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just, I don't know how that worked practically, because I would think that if someone applies, you would still send the application to the council.
Absolutely.
And the council would say, at that point, you're not in the.
And where I'm going with this is, I would love for that application, let's say there's one license available, it's allocated to Pioneer Island, I'm making all of this up, but someone tries to put, they want to open a bar, um, not on Pioneer Island, can we make it so that application never comes to council?
No, the council has, they, they have, well, the attorneys.
We have to see it, but what if there's a.
Unless they, unless you have somebody who can talk them into waiting, you know, it's more a, and I think that's how Mark worked, he, he talked to the people and persuaded them, you're, you know, in some cases it was, you don't want to come yet because your business isn't constructed yet, or whatever, and we're gonna have another license we know is coming up, and it was, but it was more of a persuasion than.
And I don't love that.
I, I.
But let's say there are 132 licenses available, and there's 132 issued today, does the 133rd application have to come to council?
Yes.
Even though there's, even though there's none to issue, that's my question.
No, it can't until there's one to issue.
That's what I'm asking, if we've said.
I'm not saying on every.
If we've said there's 131 available, period, but there's one available for Pioneer Island, are we allowed as municipality to say, that's our rule? So that they cannot come to council unless they're that one application for Pioneer Island? I'm just trying to eliminate the human factor here, and the issue of persuasion, and the issue of the fact that the seven must change every other year.
Well, I think that.
So that we have a strategy, which could change, but that's.
If we have a license available and the person wants that license to come before you, then.
We can't designate it as something else.
DJ is the right question, and the, the previous slide, is that, because we don't have anything like that at all right now, all we have is, has been first come, first served for a long time, so giving some of these recommended criteria is what's helpful. Carl, to your point, none of this will ever be the end-all, the be-all.
Sure.
Because it'll come to council without restrictions, because it's, you can't, we can't codify what the requirements are in a square procedure, but we won't, because that'd be crazy, and the state says you can.
And you're always gonna make exceptions.
Right, so always no matter what, but.
And you want to.
Yeah, and, but to your point with geographic, that was, I mean, since the time I've been here, there've been three different ones, and they've all been used somewhere else. There was one, there's a Marion Road Forever, that had been Marion Road, then it went to the Convention Center, then it went to the Grateri, and they just move around because they need to move around. The good news here is that never before today have we had any reserve licenses to talk about, and having that product available for those folks, we shouldn't ever run out, run out, we shouldn't have zero for a long time, because there'll be some churn in what we have no matter what, and the fact that we actually have reserve licenses, which we didn't have at all before then, that's the, the killer app here, because now if that happens, there will be the, a way for that person to get one.
And reserve licenses have to always come before council as well?
Yep, and they cost $10,000 instead of $600, but in the.
But that's a one-time thing.
In the grand scheme of things, that's very affordable for what you're getting, and the fact that you can get it, that's the point.
Rebecca, so if we, if we really wanted to, do we have the statutory leeway to essentially geofence certain reserve licenses that have not been issued yet, if we wanted to? And if we could do that, could that be through an internal policy, or would we have to pass an ordinance saying, one of these reserve licenses now has to be exclusively designated for a specific area? Which, I don't know if I really want to go that far, but, because I think it could create some constraints and some issues down the line, but could we have an internal policy saying, look, for one of these, I know it's on a first come, first served basis, so we can't really control that, but is there any leeway we have to essentially put in some sort of geographical fencing to a reserve license, or can we not do that at all?
I would do that as part of the criteria, I guess. I'll let the attorney, I've worked on.
If I'm not understanding, it's almost the same question.
It's the same question.
You're asking a different.
Yeah, I think it's the same.
Yeah.
Jacob, well, the good news is we have two of those currently, and they're in the district we're all talking about, Pioneer Island, would, would include the PEDD.
Right.
The better question there is, can we compel the one that's in the PEDD to give theirs back, so we have one more, we, we'll cross that bridge someday also, because we created a district for that licensee, and then they took a standard license, so they took one away from anybody else, and we didn't utilize the two that were geofenced in this particular region, right? So it's been done, we have.
Same question, just trying to kind of phrase it in a different way, because I don't want to go to a point where we have to pass an ordinance, because that puts a giant target on our heads of saying, like, we're basically picking.
Yeah, I, I would not suggest that you put those type of things in ordinancees, that's more of.
I would agree.
A process that we would go through. I think the other thing that's important to remember, and this is probably something different than what has happened before here, is when people are surrendering it contingent upon the other person getting the license, you're not required to give that license to that other person. If it was, if it's a bad location, if it's, you know, if we want to consider other locations, I mean, they're gonna have to operate under that current license, but I think it's important to remember, I think that's just been a given, I haven't been here, but it's, it seems like that's.
That, yes, that's just been a given.
It's kind of sounds like it's what the PEDD licenses are for, for premier property, that we're potentially looking at in the future, that we don't know what the, what its ultimate fate will be.
Correct.
But it's kind of why we have those, and it seems like that's why it was written into law.
Yeah, but there's, there could be another location that is not in the PEDD, and we're only allowed to have one PEDD, unless we're gonna make the whole, I don't know what the requirements are, I don't think we can make the whole city.
No, we can't, we can't.
So.
I have your licenses.
Two licenses, and one is one.
I think to both of your guys is, questions if we put something in, in like a criteria or policy, staff could tell them ahead of time, hey FYI, if this is a policy, you're gonna get shot down at, at the altar.
Right, we would recommend denial and the kind that's.
Everybody's still hassled, right? If they.
My question was to take out the human element.
Yeah.
That was my goal.
When it's come, when it's come up before, but when we've had zero or a few remaining, we say we want to keep one for this area no matter what, as a recommended thing, right?
Yep.
We're not there now, and we should never again be there again, because we have reserve licenses, and we're not gonna get rid of it, it may be great if we get rid of all 10 of those or nine of those, but the likelihood of that happening is slim.
Sure.
Yeah, we're, we're flushing licenses now.
The footing that we're on right now is better than we've ever been, so it's a great time to look at the rest of this, and then look at what the recommendations are to make the job easier for subsequent councils.
Yeah, so these are what we're recommending, um, so as far as, some ordinance changes, we'd like to get the FSRs codified, so that as we move into festival season, we have that available. Go ahead.
So, I looked at the, um, ordinance, which was basically codifying the process we just went through, with, that was the December, November, December ordinance, I do, we need to make some changes for that because of that, um, conditional approval process was in there.
Sure.
And so that, I, I would like to, um, make some revisions to that, to bring it back to you. Um, there was, um, the FSR ordinance, I had drafted, but I hadn't brought forward, I looked at that, I wanted to take at least one more look at that, but that's pretty much ready to go forward then, that would, the, the thought with the, with the full-service retail is basically, we would treat, if you want a brick and mortar, like second-location full-service retail, we would treat you like brick and mortar regular licenses, if you want an unlimited transfer, full-service retail, the event kind of thing, we would treat you, you, we'd run you through the, the same process as the special class Bs, which actually can be administratively even issued if, if they're, um, if they meet the simpler requirements.
If that's how you write, if the code is written that way.
Yeah, so that, that was kind of how we were, we were looking at them, but the, the December ordinance, I wouldn't bring back exactly the same because of that, um, conditional stuff, we've got to get that changed to, to match up with that case.
Well, I'm sorry, one of the other things we were gonna do is take out the things that are already in other areas of the code, like the zoning part, because that's already in the zoning code.
I guess that was the other direction, do we, you know, what, because like fire inspections are in another part of the code, zoning is in another part of the code, the health, health has their own code, are we take, what are we taking, what do you want taken out and what do you want left in?
In my opinion, having things duplicated in different areas makes it very challenging when you change something in one area, then you have to remember the other areas. I understand the, um, the desire to do that so people know, but that's why we have like information sheets and guidelines for people.
My comment, I want, I want is lit, sorry, leased in there and duplicated, that still makes it clear to the applicant what they need to do, I don't want surprises for the applicant.
And you, you know where I'm staying, because the same was last time, big, big changes to what we're doing now is gonna be hard, because it makes it harder to meet a bar that doesn't exist. If we want to, I mean, if you want to go extra steps and make the FSR part of it, I know the state says it has to be the same as, we have to treat the things the same.
Yeah, we have to treat them.
But that doesn't mean you can't have a separate license, they're saying you can, that's the same as what we do now. So it can be the same.
Be a different license.
Right, so I, all I, all I've ever wanted in this process was not to pile new requirements on the existing 132 we have, and that's what the last one was, there was a lot of redline in it.
So, maybe can we go through, maybe the, the four steps and just kind of get.
Sure.
And I know you all hate nodding heads, but I'm gonna, you know.
What part do you, what do you want, the approval process?
Can you go back to the, the flow chart?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, when the choreography, so, right now, the way the draft is written follows this, so the draft says you're gonna refer to community development, they're gonna check for zoning, and what's not on in the little thing, but is that, that 300, um, the statutory requirement of the, yeah, 300.
And that's for, for new applicants only, right?
This will happen whether you have it in the ordinance or not.
I get that.
Because there's other codes that cover that.
Do you, do you want it in chapter four that it's going to.
No.
Zoning to be checked at all?
No, we want, I, I mean, I want it to be like this right now.
Okay, I know you, I, no, I have one, no.
My, my preference, I think, I think Carl and I are aligned, but maybe, I don't speak for you, but I like what you said. The, I think what I would like is to say, the requirements of code section, whatever they are, have to be met in this chapter as well. I just don't want them listed in every place.
And then have like a quick guide, like you were talking.
Quick guide.
Infoguide, because then you're not making new text.
So normally.
If I want to get nerdy and actually look at the code, I'm gonna see where else I have to go.
Correct. And that's actually a really good time to see, you know, I'm joking.
Normally, the, for the alcohol, you say, we, you know, we're following check 25, and then you could put the other chapters or just the other code, because it's already covered in the other areas of the code.
So, I'm just, I'm trying to process this in my head, so we would say you refer to like, community development to compliance with chapter 30, the zoning code, and whatever that section is, 125.
Yes.
In the state, yeah.
Something, and then Oshkosh Police Department, they do the check, um.
That's outlined in the code.
That's outlined in, Fire Department, um, it would be here, here usually chapter 13 for inspection with the fire code, so you just want me to add.
Just the section references for where else they have to look?
Okay. The Health Department is the one, I'm not sure, because I don't know the county codes, but they.
But that's in there now, right? We do it now.
All this happens now.
All this happens now.
So we don't have any reason to change those things, because we're doing them, we've done them for decades.
But I, I agree with, I've been, but we talked about this before, that we, we should write it down.
It is.
In the ordinance.
It is.
And then I'd like to just reference the sections rather than write it down exactly what has to happen again.
Yep.
That way everyone's on the same page.
And there needs to be an infographic of how to, or what, you know, this is what they're gonna look for, what.
When, the process is not mysterious currently, it, it does reference that now, it really knows what requirements there are to meet, because we have to meet them.
Understood, I just, you're, you understand it so much better than I will, but if I want to open a bar to compete with Beckett's, then I might.
You should.
You have to pay $10,000.
Unless I get rid of one of these other ones.
It's not hard for you, it's easy, it's easy now.
But that's my point, is I'd like it referenced that way, I know there were a couple of other questions on there too, about changes, I think having the FSRs administratively discharged.
For the, for the temporary events.
Would be great, I think making sure that CBB knows how to do that means that we're working easier as a city, we don't have to come before council for those things, we want events, we want people to drink at those events and spend money, we want those things, right? I think those are positive things. Um, working through the quota piece, I would love to have maybe a subcommittee do that, but that's me speaking out of turn, to figure out maybe how we should address those things, so I'll let someone else speak to that. I love this last one though, and that's what I wanted to get to, is increasing the use of the license from 30 days to something like six months.
Can I, can, before we jump to that one, can I just make sure everybody, so, I'm hearing one, don't have it in, one, have the, have the four things in there, but refer to the code, I'm seeing another head not on that, another head not on that.
Yeah, referring to the state code, only because it reduces the amount of work we have to do when they change their minds.
Okay.
That's, I think is what I'm saying.
You've been very quiet.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, it reduces the chance for us to make mistakes if we're.
So when a new app, can we go back to that, um, the, yeah, so when a life, an application comes in, we, and the code, we're, we're, we're gonna say, we send it to these four departments, and then we're gonna be just, I'm gonna add some language being more specific about what they're reviewing for compliance with, are you okay with that?
True.
Okay, so then we can move to the next.
I know, I'm, it, it, that's a little.
I know, I'm not gonna make you happy, I know.
I'm not saying make me happy, no, it's a little, it's a little vague in premise ahead of time, because the last time we saw a redline, the police department got all kinds of new responsibilities that they don't have now, and they got more purview than they had previously. So I, that's why I pushed back last time.
The only thing I will say there is, whatever was in the, the redline was what they told me they do currently.
Okay.
When I wrote it, I sat and talked to each one, and what they told me they do currently is what was written.
That I will. That I will...
But I, I will, I, I think I understand where you're going.
If it winds up like this, I'll be very pleased, I, yeah, I know you are, I'm not trying to push that out of the party, I just want to make sure it doesn't look like it looked like.
I'd love to make you all happy, but I know I'm not going to make you.
We do not want to make it more difficult.
That's all I'm getting at.
We want to treat everyone equally, and we want, we do not want to make it more burdensome to, to gain a license or to use one effectively.
Yep.
We can go back to that last.
I was just going to say also, if you're detailing every single step, if something gets adjusted, then you have to change the code again.
Yep.
Which, the last one?
The last one that had the steps longer, because I think DJ wanted to address more, like, stop the...
I'd love to go to a longer, I mean, use of 30 days within 12 months, it's a great thing, we only have 132 of these things, though, I feel like using it for a longer period of time is not a bad thing, I'd want to understand, if we are going through a transaction of a bar, for example, how do we deal with that? And I think maybe that's the more nuanced things, but six months seems like a more than reasonable amount of time to require the use of one of these things, because they're so valuable.
Agreed, it's about the only resource we have that is allocated in this manner and limited in this manner, is one we administer in this way, it's not like anything else, so having one and not using it is detrimental, everybody.
So, something like 180 days of the last year might deal with the issue of, like, closed on Mondays, right?
Is this something you guys want to wait and see how many licenses we get back, or do you want it to come with these other, because I think we're looking at turning around the other changes, either for the next meeting or the, the following one at the latest, but...
I mean, you could always, you could always start with 180, and it's, to do this, we're going to have to go through a revocation process, so it'll take...
Or non-renewal, yeah.
Yeah, some time, so it wouldn't be an immediate thing, so by the time we would go through that, whatever was going to transpire might have transpired.
If we made this change in this next draft, for example, it would allow us to educate all of the people that are going to go through license renewal this time around, maybe that's what you're saying, and I think that's only a positive, so maybe we can write it in a way that's starting July 1st, 2025, the new rule is 180 of the next 365, you have to use it, so people are on notice.
And I would agree, and asking the questions of whether you're utilizing them or not is beneficial, that's tough, I mean, the last time that Diane, you and Mark and I sat down on this, we made a list of people that we know aren't using them, and that's part of this, there's, there's a list of licenses that exist currently that are not being used and that they don't have any liquor period, and we don't want to take them back, you want to either give them an opportunity to give them back, because we need them back, we have zero to issue, so I think that's really helpful, and making that the policy going forward and making it a little harder to adhere to, to is great, because you don't want to force them, you don't want, I don't want to make you have to call people and go, do you have any vodka? Because that's not a fair question to ask either, but we do want to educate people that they are limited.
It sounds like Diane's going to have to take a road trip, Rose, that's stupid, yeah.
Sure, I don't know, no problem.
I agree with DJ at both points, that, that sounds like a great idea, and giving advance notice of it would be really helpful.
So, not the 30 days and six months, but 180 days out of the last...
12 months.
12 months, effective, 7-1?
Only because we can show this during renewal, I don't change.
July 1?
But I'm just spitballing, and I think Matt has something to say.
And, yeah, I'm just...
There's like 14 gears all jammed up in my head on this one, because we're also running up against a clock coming here. We're kind of spit, you're not, but you're kind of spitballing some, and I hate to use the word arbitrary, six-month number, in terms of usage, and I want these things used too.
Yeah.
I'm also the realist of, having sat up there for seven years, councils historically struggle very much on taking that back, I know, I know how council's speaking right now, or at least several are, and I don't, I believe you're, you're true in what you say now, it is very difficult up there to take one back, and to the point of, we had an establishment that sat vacant for a number of years, we did pull that one back, but it sat vacant for years before we pulled it back, right? In this case, we would be pulling significant numbers back, potentially significantly more numbers back.
How many people are using it for four, I'm sorry?
So, my only question would be, any, any question we ask would only delay the implementation, and I know we don't necessarily maybe want to do that, but as part of the information gathering, I'm just wondering if maybe we're willing to say, maybe not on 2025, maybe it's 2026, we're changing that number, we just don't know what we're changing it to until we have a better idea of the actual usage that's occurring, maybe?
I don't disagree with that, six months wasn't arbitrary, just because it's...
I didn't want to use that word.
That's really the thought, is like, you should be using it 50% of the time, because someone else might use it, and that's kind of where my...
I'm not doubting it's a difficult thing to pull back, but because they are so limited, and it's one of the tools we have in our toolbox to get additional businesses, we need additional jobs, we need additional money in people's pockets, we need to make homes, it means a lot of things, I think we pull the levers we can. Now, I don't want to delay the process, because I want to get the FSRs out, especially before we get into festival season, so I agree with you there, but I do think this is worth addressing, especially because we know we have at least the perception of communication issue when it comes out of this building, and that's not anybody's specifically's fault, but I think one of the ways we're going to prove that is communicating well in advance, and if we're going to make the change, and we have an opportunity during renewal, we should. And so, I think that time is not on our side, as we're going up to the council meeting, as she says, I'm not going to make that change in this draft, but I think maybe we pull it out of the equation, and we talk about it at the same time.
I agree.
So that we have a couple of weeks to talk about it, and maybe we'll get to a resolution rather than in the next five minutes.
One of the things I would mention is, I'd like to get the FSRs in that same boat, get them out as fast as you can, is there any sort of way where we could put a notice in for all councils, potentially delivering, because I know this may be two separate things, but if we were hypothetically to go, and we're not going to come to it around this night, but if we were hypothetically to go and say, okay, we're going to change the usage floor in 2026, could we put in notices in 2025, renewal notices, a paragraph explaining that, I'm pretty sure that we could do that.
It's getting kind of close.
Okay.
Because we're this close to getting, having everything together for the renewals to go out.
Not for this year, but for the following year.
But, yes, we could put it in, but I thought you, I thought you meant, put it in 25, saying there may be a change in '26.
No, so when they renew in '26, for the '26, '27 year.
I think...
Or can we issue it with the license effective July 1st?
We could let them, we could let them, definitely.
Just so you know, that's safe, if council has implemented a change by then, which they not have.
As a last point, I know, because we're going to talk about it when you codify this to a degree anyway, and meeting with the deputy clerk on everybody anyway is going to help with some of this, because you're going to ask some of those questions, DJ, to your original point, I think this is a great point to have it in place, so you can ask those questions, and then also say, and just so you know, this is the usage requirement going forward, it's not that high a bar, it's really not, and we're already having a conversation face-to-face with everybody anyway, so it's the right time to ask the question with new information and theory.
Do we have any idea of how many, like, Class B license holders operate under the six-month threshold as of now?
I don't think, I don't think we do, but I think we're going to have more information once, you know, once Cheryl has a chance to talk to them.
And again, people have staffing issues right now, it's tough to make any promises, so...